Meeting will be hosted here at the Grand Hall at Old Mill Square, so looking forward to that. Twenty-six obviously is municipal election day, and once again remind everybody that the voting place is at the recreation center, so we'll beat that one to death. September is POW MIA month, and also the Alabama Department of Veterans Affairs is sponsoring an initiative called Operation We Remember, working with the American Legion Post 131 here in Columbiana. We remember is to recognize the 139 Alabamians veterans, Alabama veterans, who lost their lives to suicide last year, and so we'll be putting 139 flags out in the, in an arc around the fountain at Old Mill Square. That'll go up probably, it'll go up the week before Labor Day, and then we'll have a ceremony the weekend after Labor Day on Saturday. So, gonna try to get Jeff Newton, who's the Commissioner of the Department of Veterans Affairs, or, yes, Alabama Department of Veterans Affairs, to participate. He is from the Chelsea area, so hopefully he'll be able to make it from Montgomery to be here for that. Simplified seller's use tax. There's a lawsuit by about ten of the larger municipalities in the state of Alabama against the Alabama Department of Revenue, and what they want to do is the larger cities are concerned about losing revenue to online sales. And the way it is, the, the sales tax that's collected today is distributed, half of it goes to the state of Alabama, and they decide what they're gonna do with it. There's been some discussion about using it for the education trust fund, but there's other things. And the other half is distributed to municipalities by population. The larger municipalities who have much larger retail content believe that they are negatively impacted by the online sales that's taking it away from their businesses, and so they want a bigger piece of that pie. That would be devastating to Columbiana if we lost that revenue, and it would be devastating to about eighty-five percent of the smaller cities in, in the state of Alabama. There are four hundred and sixty-five municipalities in the state, and eighty-five percent of them are populations of ten thousand and below. So, my opinion is the fairest way to do it is by population, the way they're doing it now. And, so we'll have to see. It's in the court right now, I don't know what the court will do about it, but if they do, my sense is it's gonna end up back in the legislature, and the legislature's gonna end up trying to change how it's done, and I'm concerned about that. So I just wanna bring it to everybody's attention, and try to get people aware of it and understand it, and, and talk to your representatives, and I don't know what you think about it. Any questions on that chart? Okay. Announcements, okay. First football game, that's already been brought up, that's the Wildcats versus Lincoln, that's here at, at the high school. And then we're gonna have the premiere of Double Scoop, will air on Saturday, August twenty-third, on the Hallmark Channel, and that was filmed here on the, partially at least on Main Street here in Columbiana, so we're excited about that. Methodist Church, I think, is having a get-together and opening it up for, for everybody to come watch it there. It's gonna be kinda like an indoor musical main, except watching a movie, and so they're asking people to bring their own lawn chairs and things of that nature. And one more time, if you haven't heard, there's municipal elections at the Rec Building. Labor Day, September first, city offices will be closed, no trash pickup, and then the Birmingham Bike Club 100 Mile Race starts in Old Mill Square on Saturday, September fifth. I guess it's two days, Saturday and Sunday. Okay? Five and six. Questions? Okay, now we have public comments. You had a question?
Yeah, I think I decided I just wanna talk to them directly.
Okay, very good. Any others?
Just a quick question regarding the legislature and what's being, the lawsuit and whatnot. Have we ran a number to see how greatly that would affect us?
Well, we know what we collect for simplified seller's use tax, and it's been a positive impact on the city of Columbiana. I don't have that number off the top of my head, but we can certainly get you that number. So the concern is, is how much are they gonna take away from us, if it goes to, to the larger cities? So...
Is there, is there a percentage on that, is it like two percent, one percent?
So, so there's eight percent on online sales, four percent goes to the state, four percent goes to municipalities.
So that, that four percent would be a question?
Yeah, so the four percent would be the part that would be affected, the four percent that the state divvies out to the municipalities.
Was any information found out about Eureka Akers Road?
As far as, remind me again about...
The paving.
The paving? So, we, what we are gonna do is, because we're in the midst of our budgeting process, we will have to decide, you know, how much money we have for paving and where the paving is gonna be gone, so that is definitely on the list.
Okay.
Okay. Yes, sir?
What is the status on this proposed data center, and how is it beneficial to the people of this town?
So, you're talking about here in Columbiana?
Yeah, on industrial parkway.
Did you have any concern? You, you had mentioned earlier about wanting to bring something up.
Well, I mean, there's a lot of, there's a lot of activity, you know, and correct me if I'm wrong, Charlie, DigiHost has been here since 2022, is that right?
They purchased the property then, and they, I don't, I don't know exactly when they started operations.
So, yeah, I mean, you know, DigiHost has been, they purchased the property in 2022, so I mean, that's public knowledge, they've been here since 2022. They're in that, sorry.
No, go ahead, I'm sorry.
What, I'm sorry, go ahead.
But it seems like it's been kind of a hush, hush kind of thing, and people, I think, if they were aware, that knew that the noise pollution and the resource hogging that these places do and actually set up, I don't think, I feel like people haven't been very well informed in this community at all about it.
Well, I can give you my, my partake of it. So twenty, so just for, I'm, I'm not, I mean, to answer your question, I don't think anything's been hidden. The business license process here in town, Charlie, correct me if I'm wrong, the city council doesn't approve business licenses. They approve ordinances, they approve zoning changes, so when a business comes into town, this body up here really doesn't approve business licenses. To that point, I mean, there's talk out there now that we're turning away businesses in the city of Columbiana, and that's not factual either, while we talk about that. But I don't, to your point, I don't think anything's been hidden, obviously, like I said, 2022, that came up, is crypto mining and, correct me if I'm wrong, crypto mining and maybe a little bit AI technology. When that brought up, that was the time that financial institutions were in crypto technology, crypto mining, and AI technology, so that was back in 2022. So that's three years ago. Matter of fact, that discussion was held here in council, talking about DigiHost coming to town. So that's, that's public, that's, that's not being hidden from anybody. They were given a business license in 2022, at that time, so we've had a three-year span there, that really nothing has been brought up about DigiHost. There hasn't been any causes of complaints on industrial parkway about being loud or anything out there that, that I know of. You may, you may know more, but I have, to this council, there's nothing been brought up in terms of noise, pollution, any type of things out there on that industrial parkway that I know of, and nobody on this council has mentioned to me.
But are they, is it, but is there not more of being added to that place?
Yeah, so I, but I, to answer your question, I think, so I keep going back to 2022, and I answer your question too, in terms of, nothing's been hidden from any citizen in the city of Columbiana as far as DigiHost. You probably know more than I know about it, in terms of, this DigiHost conversation came up two weeks ago when something was going on in Westover and Harpersville. That's really when it hit the fan, and then, you know, to be honest with you, I've been in ten conversations this week about DigiHost, just from people just asking for information, giving me information, I've done my own research. I don't think anybody collectively knows the full intel of what these facilities are. I mean, is, is Harpersville and Westover, the proposal out there, a lot different than the one in Columbiana? I don't know, I can't answer that at this point. What I'm doing at this point, and what I've challenged the council, just to get information on what that may be. I haven't been in meetings with them, I haven't had anybody reach out to me on behalf of DigiHost, but I can tell you a hundred percent certainty, for anybody in this room, anybody listening, that this council and this mayor is not preventing information on DigiHost from anybody.
People being educated is what, this, that's a big deal for a small town, because anybody who does a little bit of research can find out that these data centers destroy communities through noise, through the amount of water usage and amount of electrical usage, where all you have to do is look at data centers all across this country, and they prey on small communities such as Columbiana, people fall for it, and before you know it, their property values are plummeting. And I think that could very well be what's gonna happen in Columbiana.
Well, to your point, yeah, and to your point, you know, like I said, two weeks ago, and anybody on this council can let you know that, that I, I brought up the idea of, we need to do some research on that. Just simply, because we fully don't know, I mean, when you talk about stuff like that, you don't know what type of facility to be here versus what type of facility to be here. Like I said, I'm getting educated on it myself, it's just, you know, I think there's a misconception out there that this council is preventing information on these things, or whatever, from people, and that's just not accurate.
But, so, couple points here. We should probably get educated before we vote and make these decisions for our community and allow businesses to come in, change zoning that's required, and I know what these needs are.
Yeah.
Now, secondly, this is the mayor, this is a question for you. Months ago, at a city, couple city council meetings, you were talking about a couple businesses were gonna be coming to town, one on industrial parkway, being a technology company. Is this a development? So that's very misleading, in my opinion, about it being a technology company, first, that's gonna provide twenty high-paying jobs, if I recall right, versus a data center that's gonna cost one hundred and forty million dollars, if I understand, to build out over the next couple of years, at a consumption rate of four thousand households worth of power, and, what, a couple hundred thousand liters of water a day?
Well, I can, I can tell you for certain right now, there's a water meter out there the same size as my house. And I'm not saying I'm for or against, believe me, I'm doing my research, and I'm not, I'm not being an advocate for anything, but in the research that I've gathered out there right now, there's a water meter the same size as my house. Now, I don't, I haven't seen the plans of a new facility, or whatever that facility's gonna be, but like I said, you know, that, my whole thing is just, I wanna get educated with it, simply because everything that's going on around us, and it's not just here, it's, it's all over country. But, the mayor may have more...
Well, we need to not let the big corporations and big business trample over the small communities, suck our resources dry, and ruin our community.
I would disagree with you.
Let, let me speak out then. I, I agree with what you say. So the question is, will that happen? There's an enormous amount of fear, anxiety, and information about what's going on with data centers. And I'll tell you what I know, I'll tell you what I don't know, and I'll tell you what I think I know, okay? And when I mentioned this thing about the technology center, I had signed a non-disclosure agreement with this company, which has now changed their name to Digipower X. Before I did that, I had some trepidation about that. Should I do that? I spoke with our city attorney about it, I spoke with Fifty-Eight Inc., who's our economic development arm in Shelby County, and it's a common practice, and I know from my own time in business, if you're, if you're starting some sort of new business operation for competitive reasons, until things are at a certain stage, you don't wanna let people know about it. If there's mergers and acquisitions, one company's buying another, you keep it out of the public eye, especially if it's publicly traded corporations, because you don't want any insider trading or anything of that nature, which is not the case, I mean, they are publicly traded, but I didn't really think that was the case here. So, at the, after consulting council and Fifty-Eight Inc., I signed a non-disclosure agreement. Since then, a lot of their initial plans that they had briefed us on have changed, because the market is changing, and I have a lot more information now than I have then, but I am not, again, an expert in data centers, AI, or even crypto technology. So let me go back to the beginning. They bought approximately ten acres in our industrial park, which was already zoned M2, so there was no rezoning involved in buying that. Going back to what Ricky was saying, we do rezone property at the council level, but if somebody comes in and wants to purchase a piece of property for a business that fits the zoning classification, we have little or any ability to do anything about it. I've discussed that with the attorneys as well. So if they bring some, a business in that fits the zoning classification, there's almost nothing we can do about it. So they had grandiose plans over time of being able to expand, and those plans have changed. And what they did is they started a crypto mining operation with, I don't know, there's eight or ten pods out there, they're basically Conexes, and they've loaded servers in them, and they have cooling fans on there. Now, I have driven by there, and it's a small operation, so it wasn't gonna generate much noise, but I've driven by there, you can't hear it from the road, or you couldn't, it's not operating now, okay? And I walked up to the fence, and I could barely hear it. Who are their neighbors? Well, the property that they bought faces industrial boulevard, you've got the county bus shop on the south side, north side, they've got some buffer property over there, and then some distance away, there's some properties on residential mobile homes. To what Ricky was saying, we've not had any noise complaints from the operation that they've had, which has been quite small. What they are doing now, which to me is a good thing, because our industrial park is blighted, is they are tearing down, and it's about two-thirds, maybe three-quarters demolished, the old Greedy Foundry that was there. Now, Greedy had a substation that, foundries use a lot of electrical energy as well, okay, because of the high temperatures they use for casting metals and stuff. Not like what you hear about data centers using, okay? So they will use a lot of energy, even when they, they're gonna start at twenty-two megawatts, and, and their plan, depending upon how their business goes, is to increase to fifty-five megawatts. Depending upon data that you read, on how you calculate how much energy is fifty-five megawatts, it could be enough to supply a, a community of anywhere from twenty-five thousand to fifty thousand people. But, it's dedicated energy. They have recently made an agreement, I don't think they've closed the purchase, there's two substations out there. There's one that is dedicated to the city of Columbiana. So all power that comes into the city, not all power that comes, but, but the city of Columbiana has its own substations to provide power to the city. This operation will have its own dedicated substation. I was on a teleconference recently with the company and Alabama Power, and Alabama Power has assured them that they can provide the power to that substation, which Digipower X, as they're called now, will own, it will be theirs, they will buy it from Alabama Power, and it won't have any impact on the, the power to the community of, of Columbiana, according to Alabama Power. You know, you have separate source of energy for Columbiana, you'll have a separate source of energy for their facility. They have also, where they were going to erect a very large facility, similar to what you've probably seen on the internet with noisy cooling fans and things of that nature, that's no longer the case. They have entered into an agreement, they say, I'm, I'm telling you what they say, with Nvidia, we've all heard about Nvidia, they're a major technology company these days, and apparently Nvidia has developed some servers that have a great deal of capacity, such that they can do the job with a fewer number of servers. So they will still have pods, they'll be unique pods, they won't be like the, the Conexes that they have out there now, and they won't have the cooling fans that make a lot of noise. There will be some noise, obviously, excuse me. In Nvidia, in these servers, they've developed a new chip, if you will, that's in them, and it's called DTC, it's a direct-to-chip cooling, and they will be liquid-cooled, okay, and the liquid will be recirculated. And there's been all kinds of stuff about it's gonna use two million gallons of water a day, and whatever it was that you said, and they sent me some mathematical computations that I haven't studied in great detail, but I looked at the, the bottom line, and what they said was, initially, it will use three thousand gallons a day, which is according to our water department and our sewer department, that's nothing, and won't have any issues with that. When they expand and get to full capacity, ever how long that will take, they say they will use eleven thousand gallons a day, and again, the water board, as well as the sewer department, has said, not an issue, as far as any water is concerned. How long will it take them to expand? I think, and I'm speculating here, I think that they are dependent upon how well their initial business performs with the, the pods that they will initially set up, the cash flow that it generates, and that will determine how quickly they expand. Been a lot, I've been, I haven't followed, I've talked to Larry Riggins, who's the mayor in, in Westover, and up until recently, because I think of concerns with Bessemer and concerns with Wilsonville, there wasn't any concern, according to Mayor Riggins in Westover, but apparently now there is, just like there's concern being expressed here in Columbiana. And, and I think that's fair, you know, at some point in time, we're gonna have to get this data, and we're gonna have to have the folks from the company stand up in front of everybody and, and tell them, hey, this is what we plan to do, and here's, here's how we plan to do it, because what I'm telling you is what I've been told, and, and they're gonna have to provide the facts and data as to how it's gonna work. So, not a lot of water, energy will be dedicated to them, Alabama Power says they can provide it. They came here because, in New York, where they're relocating from, New York did not want to provide them the energy, and as I understand it, the primary reason is, New York has, in recent years, made a massive transition to renewable energy, solar and wind, and they simply could not provide that much energy with those sources, and they were having difficulty actually providing it to their, their residents. Alabama has an abundance of energy. We have, we are actually one of the largest states with nuclear power, nuclear energy. We have, going back to the depression, when, when TVA started hydroelectric power, we have a lot of hydroelectric power. And of course, we have an abundance of fossil fuel, which still generates the majority of energy in, in the US and in, and in Alabama. So energy availability, according to Alabama Power, is not an issue. There has been some concern, I've heard through the rumor mill, that it would, and, you know, I, cause I read the same stuff everybody else reads, that it was gonna drive energy costs up, and I've been assured that's not the case. The energy rates are determined by the Public Service Commission in the state of Alabama, and because of the abundance of energy here, not a lot. The biggest difference that I see for what's here in Columbiana versus Wilsonville, and again, I know about Wilsonville, what I see on television, what I read, what everybody else reads, and I understand the piece of property that Wilsonville is considering annexing, it's actually not in Wilsonville today, if I understand it, is two hundred and forty acres. I don't know how big a facility they plan to put on that two hundred and forty acres, or what kind of technology they plan to use, but if they plan on filling that facility up compared to our ten acres out here, the facility here is, is considered, again, I get this informa, I get this information from, from the company, so we can take that for, you know, what we think it's worth. The facility here will be considered a tier-three facility, which means small. The one in Bessemer, the fourteen billion dollar data center, they're talking about that, that clearly is a tier-one. What's in Wilsonville, I have no idea, I haven't really heard anything about that. The primary thing I hear concern about Wilsonville is using agricultural land for an industrial process, whereas what we're using is industrial property, already zoned industrial, with an industrial operation already on it, to just to grow. And so, that's about really all I know, so...
Couple points to what you said. The whole thing reminds me a whole lot of the movie of Aaron Brockovich, and what that story stemmed from in reality, and how we got the beginning phase, or something like that, cause there isn't a lot of knowledge of it, a lot of these things are newer. Those are great concerns to me. And, from what I understand, with Wilsonville Data Center, now, their council meeting got canceled last night, I'd have time to go to that one as well, but...
I'm sorry, what?
Wilsonville City Council meeting last night was canceled.
Oh, they had, they had...
They were supposed to have a meeting about that data...
They had a bunch of people with signs and everything there, I don't know if that was their council meeting or what, but anyway, they had a meeting.
Well, they're probably pissed, cause it was canceled for whatever reason, but, from my understanding, that they're buying a big chunk of, trying to change a big chunk of land, it's gonna start out as relatively small, at a hundred megawatt facility, that's only gonna take a small portion of that land. So, obviously, might figure plans to expand for the reason of buying all that. I just, I want our city council and mayor to not only think about money coming in from these businesses that are promised the hills and have such good intentions, it's usually not the case when there's that much money involved.
So I'm gonna be candid, and, yeah, I wanna be candid, and so I shared with you everything that I knew and what I've been told, okay? And the thing that I have a concern about, and we as a council, I know we'll have a concern about, is we don't have the authority necessarily to stop them from coming. Once again, because when somebody builds a facility in a manufacturing district, in a property that's already zoned M2, we just cannot arbitrarily say no. There has to be a very, very good reason, and it's been challenged in the court many, many times. I had that discussion with city attorney just yesterday. So, it's just, this is one of those things. But, but nevertheless, to your point, and to your point, people need to know and understand, and I think, as you, as you all know, our current administration is pushing the development of these data centers all over the country. The state of Alabama wants to get in on that action, okay? And so I know that there are twenty-six data centers, I think, on the books in the state, and there are several more in the works around the state. And I, I think, you know, the, there is a, there are those in the state who would like to see us, the Alabama, get our share of this. Shelby County is a place where people want to do business, and so, again, we list properties that are up for sale through Fifty-Eight Inc., and that's how these guys found the facility here in 2022, and purchased the facility... And purchased the facility after having their conversations at that time with Alabama to see if they could, Alabama Power, to see if they could provide the power requirements that they had, so. But there may be limitations as to what we can do to stop it.
I guess I can go back to when I said thing to being hidden, maybe not intentionally, but that's what non-disclosure agreements do when you are not allowed by law to say anything about a certain company or its operations and you sign that paper. To me, that's the first step of people getting taken advantage of.
Well, that's your opinion. I guess I've dealt with non-disclosure agreements and things like in that type of a business environment, if I may, if I may, for, you know, decades, not in a public capacity, which is why I first consulted the city attorney before I even did it. But a lot of that stuff is now moot because DigiHost or DigiPowerX, as they're now called, has put all this stuff out in press releases and it's in the public domain for people to see. So, and they're talking about what they're planning on doing here in Columbia. So you can find that out there in the public domain.
I guess my point in that, no disrespect, Matt, but my point in that was, maybe the people in this town could have known better, because maybe you don't have the power to shut these things down, but enough people getting together and saying, no, we're not going to allow that in our community can, but it's already been approved, they're already working on their phases.
So, so let me ask.
Where was the ability of the people of this town to know about it when we worked, I mean, yeah, I saw the article in 2022, and that's the only article there ever was that I saw. I looked for, I looked for, I drove down that road looking for this Bitcoin manufacturing company, because I'm concerned, because I have a piece of property where water gets drawn to feed this city. And, you know, it just, it, I can talk to dozens of people and they knew nothing about it. They knew nothing about tractor supply coming in until the ground was broken. Everybody's like, what's that going on? And I was told by someone, and whatever, you know, for what it's worth, that they were instructed not to use that name. And there's just stuff, there's stuff that's not forthright, that I think is, it's not right for the people of the town if we feel like things are not being presented to us that are that important to the community, you know, it's just, it's, that's huge news, that data center. I mean, they can give you all the specs they want and say, you know, just we promise we're not going to use more than 11,000 gallons worth of water, we promise we're not going to be a noise problem. No, just look at history of what these places do to the community.
Well, let me go back and address that. So if they do make those commitments to us, where we do have power is in, authority is in the business licensing and within the potential to withhold business license. Now, they have a business license today, but they have a business license for a certain thing. If they expand their operation, then their business license needs to be amended. And that license can put restrictions on what they can and cannot do within, again, reason. There's strict laws about zoning and all that sort of stuff, but we can put conditions, can't use more than this much water, you can't, you know, all those types of things. And then if they don't comply with that, we can withdraw their business license. So there is some power in the licensing authority.
So have they not already been approved for this second phase? Is this something?
So they have a business license for what they're, the operation that they've been doing. But if they change that operation, then that would have to be amended. Am I correct?
Because your license is only good for, per location, so they would have to have a new license for the new location.
Okay, so isn't that what the Greedy Building's being torn down for now? Is that same company?
Yeah, it is. The Greedy, the Greedy Building has been, they own that property. But again, they had a license for this crypto mining operation, if you will.
So they haven't gotten their license for this data center if they sign the exam?
Not yet. So if they change what they're doing, they would have to amend their business license. And although we might not be able to stop the business license per se, but we can put conditions on there, such as the water usage and things of that nature.
And I'll just wrap up, Mr. I appreciate the conversation that you brought, obviously, this week, I've been, again, over 10 conversations, I cannot count. And there is, there is conversation that's still to be had, to your points about water, electrical, you know, I was in a conversation that we hadn't even talked about, was like just a fire piece of it. I was talking to a firefighter in Birmingham a while back, and I asked him about just Tesla trucks or Cybertrucks.
Yeah, what about?
Well, I asked him, I said, well, how do you put those things out when they catch on fire? He said, they just let them burn. You know, and one of the, one of the articles I read this week brought my attention to that conversation I had, so I mean, that was sort of perked my ears up, you know, and that was my whole thing to, you know, to bring some awareness of the things that I have and the conversation that I've had. But I, you know, the mayor, I think, explained it pretty well, that's the information that I didn't know. Right, wrong, or indifferent, I don't disagree with you about the NDAs. I mean, I think when something like that comes to town or an NDA comes, people want to know, good, bad, or indifferent, because it creates some type of excitement, you know? But I understand a non-disclosure agreement, I've never been in one, thank goodness, but you make a valid point. I mean, I'm not discrediting that at all. So to your point, you know, I just really wanted to make sure that you were on the impression that, from my seat and always, I hope that the perception is out there that if that's what I'm coming, just individually, if that's what I'm coming across as, like I said, on this conversation, I think it's ongoing. And I think, you know, information is coming in every day about these things, and I'm happy to talk with you offline, I know everybody up here is as well, but, you know, I appreciate the conversation. Any information you can give me, I'm happy to take, but, you know, it's a, it's a big, it's a big animal. And the more you get educated with, the better off it'll be.
So let me also kind of go back to this NDA thing. One of the benefits of the NDA is, there was a lot, there's a lot of information I would not know, would not have known, because like I said, everything I've shared with you is, is out there in the public domain now, but, but had I not sound, signed that NDA. And when they share that information, it gives me the opportunity to challenge them on it. Like, one of the things I challenged was how many jobs it's going to create. If you remember when the crypto mining started and they had envisioned, they had an expansion option, they were talking 75 to 100 jobs. And I was like, really? I don't know much about data centers, but they just kind of run on their own. Where's, where are these 75 or 100 jobs? They begin to back down on that. And now, I think it's even going to be less because of this new technology. They've changed their modus operandi, I guess, if it's, for lack of a better term, and it's going to require, I think, even fewer people to do it. Because a lot of the jobs, when they were planning on big, building this big old facility, which would have been basically the same footprint, same size as the Greedy Foundry, is now going to be just a whole bunch of these little pods all over the place. I'm sure they'll have some office space and some other stuff, but a lot of those jobs were just facilities maintenance jobs, if you will, which they won't generate now. So, so anyway, pushed back with them, told them things that I felt like that they would need to do for the city of Columbia. And, you know, have also worked with Alabama Power to find out, make sure it wasn't going to have an impact on the city of Columbia. So far, my understanding is, from an electrical perspective, it won't. And then I brought up the issue of the water because of the fact that, and by the way, that's not in the public domain, so, but he did share that with me, and I told him that there was some concern about that, so I'm sharing it with you.
Yeah, part of my complaints, and from many people that I talk with about, is we hear about these things too late. It's, it seems as though the last many years, growth has been number one priority at any cost and all costs to the small town. And, you know, businesses are allowed to open on Main Street without a storefront there. Like, that's crazy for the small town. You're taking away the charm of this small town. How many more of those get allowed?
What are we talking about? Businesses?
Or pandering cookie, right? Like, talking, it's things like that. It's the developments that have gone on unchecked, it's these rezoning of all these lands without limitations on any of it. So when you say, hey, we, we can divvy out the business license, put in moratoriums and restrictions and all these sorts of things, these haven't been done the last many years for anything. All these developments that got built on these super tiny lots and builders aren't being required to put in parks in the communities that they're building can be a break. Like, let's see the restrictions being put in place, instead of saying, well, we can, but we haven't. And it seems like everything and anything that is growth in business has just gotten past my city council, gotten past you, Mr. Mayor, and it's just, what about smart growth? What about controlled growth? Instead of catching every dollar we can, not every dollar is worth picking up.
Well, I don't agree that it's been growth and revenue at all cost. I don't agree with that. But that's, this is my opinion. I mean, obviously, no, there's a lot of talk, even, I read something today, since we're on the subject, there's been a lot of talk about, to your point, contrarily, there's a lot of talk out there now on all social media that's not in this room, that we've kept out businesses at all cost. I think that's an absolute false statement, 100% altogether. When we've been trying to recruit businesses here for the longest time, and I've said this over and over, if I had the investment, if I had the money and the capital, I would open another business in the city of Columbia, but a lot of people out there are trying to spend other people's money. When we're trying to recruit businesses, they've talked about, everybody's talked about gas stations and all this, there's too many in town. That's people that want to invest in our city. But to your point about just taking dollar over dollar, not worrying about the community, I just don't think that's factual. And I don't think you'll ever make me believe that.
So let me, let me also piggyback on what Ricky just said. This council and me, when I came into office, this is almost a completely new city council from this term, this administration. And the two subdivisions that have these tiny lots that you're concerned about, which are larger than some lots that we already have in subdivisions in town and have been here for a long time, those were in the works before this council sat, okay? And when, for example, Springs Crossing expanded, we required them to increase the size of their lots. And in their expanded areas, they haven't started on them now, but this last phase that they're going in, they are going to have green space and parks and things in there. The one across the street, which was approved before this council set, it didn't. And then, as we have rezoned property, when we bring annexed property into the city or we zone property that's currently not zoned because it has to be rezoned, I think almost entirely, unless it was something that, like we were just brought up, a request to make it M2, which might be appropriate, I don't know, we'll find out when we get more information about that. But pretty much everything has been R1, which is not the small lots. So there's a perception, but it didn't happen with this group here. And yes, we want to bring, we want to fill storefronts and we want to bring businesses that generate the revenue, that provide the amenities like the parks, and let us provide city services and things like that. If a city doesn't grow, it will die. We're being squeezed out on both ends by, you know, Clear on one side and Chelsea on the other. And so our ability to grow physically is, is kind of constrained right now. But what we're doing, I think, is very smart. And the growth that we've had has been really quite modest. We're growing at less than 2% a year, and where we were dead last before this council set in Shelby County in growth, because we had had four years of negative growth, which when you have four years of negative growth, you also have economic decline, which we did. We had an 18.6% poverty rate. Half our city sits in an opportunity zone, which requires a 20% poverty rate to qualify for that. And our poverty rate today is 11.7%, because we're focused on trying to create jobs and create a community that is good for the people that we live in. Are we going to make mistakes? Are we going to do some things that you don't like and you don't like, other people don't like? Sure, that's going to happen. But it's not what this group has tried to do, I can tell you that.
And while we're on the subject, you know, for the longest time, Columbia on Main Street for restaurants has been, the connotation is that it's only a courthouse lunch type of place. Well, there's one restaurant on Main Street, and I know the leaders and I know just the tish, they're not seeing it that way anymore. I mean, so those connotations are, the people are saying, we're turning away businesses and it's, it's just a, you know, a courthouse, lunchroom, community, that's not accurate. And, and I guess it frustrates me because there's so much opportunity and so much activity, especially on Main Street. You know, there's a statement made today that we're turning away businesses just simply because we don't want to deal with them. And that is not factual. That would be crazy. So I don't know where that information's coming from. I mean, I don't know, I don't know in the years that I've been here, we've ever turned down a business that was, had a good reputation or whatever on this council. It's just never happened. So I don't know where that information comes from. And you can't prevent it, but it just frustrates me that, to your point about retail and storefronts in Main Street, I don't disagree with you, but it's better for those business owners that reinvitalize those businesses to have tenants in there. There's paying sales tax to the city, there's one on Main Street right now, it's a beautiful building, that he's been trying for three, four, five years to get a tenant there. We just need a tenant. It's a perfect place for a restaurant.
It'll be the last one, too. They're pretty much all be occupied.
But, but to your point, the price is right for the developer of that building. So I, you know, whoever opens up a restaurant in that building will blow the doors off of Main Street. I've said it for five or six years.
They will, I agree. It's a perfect building, a lot of stuff.
So Columbia's not turning away businesses. And we're not selling our souls to the devil, I don't think, just for revenue.
All right. Any more discussion on this, guys? Any other comments or questions from anybody? Yes, sir.
Just last, last council meeting I brought up about the road sign missing at Napa, there's still no sign up. And I found another one on Egg and Butter, there's no road sign on Winter Drive.
So I got with Alan, we talked about the Napa road sign, and we've, he's made a list of all places that need road signs. The one that you're talking about on Egg and Butter, I think Alan said they've replaced it three or four times, and for some reason it keeps disappearing, but nevertheless.
I just stumbled on it.
But nevertheless, on his, it's on his list. You also brought up the stop sign, I think, the last time? Yeah? I don't know how those things disappear either, but they do, so. Anything else on that, Alan? Am I, I don't think?
One for a half of dollars, I think.
Yeah, and, and so he said that's on his list, so.
Do we replace speed limit sign?
We should, and there, and there, and actually, I've asked Alan, as we go into the budgeting process, let's do an assessment of all of our signs and let's go ahead and plan on the ones that need to be replaced, because they're street signs, speed limit signs, things like that. We replace them in the city limits. Again, when we're on county roads and state highways, we have some limitations on what we can do there, so. Anything else? Okay, if there's not anything else, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.